Alderman Valco.
President.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Please stand as Pastor Arthur Gass, your invocation. And after that, we'll go right into the pleasures, right there at the podium, Pastor.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, as we come together this evening, we're grateful for this, our time of fellowship. We thank you for this time for gathering for the business of the city. We pray, oh God, for our police officers, council members, all of the firemen, our teachers, our soldiers that are serving on foreign and domestic soils. We pray for the business of the city, that your will be done. All of the citizens, oh God, we just pray that you would protect each and every one, guide us, and give us your presence so that to know everything would be okay. We love you, we honor your name, in the name of Christ Jesus, we pray. Every heart say amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And next on the agenda would be Mayor's comments. These past few weeks, we've had a number of phenomenal events that has been wonderful for our community. Such as Blues Underwater was a blast, Afro Fest was an awesome time, and Art Walk continues to be a tremendous success. Thanks to everyone who helped to make those events very successful. I had the honor of being named a 2017 EGA Fellow and attend a week-long bipartisan conference a few weeks ago in Champaign, Illinois. It was always a pleasure to serve, it is always a pleasure to serve as an ambassador for the city of Waukegan. And this was a great learning experience. I'm sure many of you noticed the displays in the lobby and on the first and second floor regarding Islamic Foundation North. I had an incredible informative and pleasant time this past Friday and Saturday meeting with the members of the Islamic Foundation North located on Oak Plain Road. They wanted an opportunity to reach out to other residents regarding the Islamic faith. I would like to thank all the generous businesses, individuals, who have helped donate school supplies in preparation for school opening this week. The following: Currency Exchange, JCC Chicago, Catholic Charities, AUSL, Western Union, NB Financial Bank, Kits for Kids, Republic Bank, Electronic License Service, Community Financial Service Centers, Comcast, CA Ventures, City of Chicago Department of Family and Support Services, Boys and Girls Club of Chicago, Operation Home Front, YMCA, Illinois DCFS, and Kennedy Construction. Your generosity is greatly appreciated. With that being mentioning, with that being mentioned, schools opening, school openings, must all be mindful to drive safely around the school zones. A lot of our children are getting ready to go back. Parents, I know during the morning time, you're trying to drop off, drop off your kids and get them to class and at the same time be on time for work. But I caution you, some of our school areas on some of our main arteries, like give you an example, Whittier School, which is located on Lewis Avenue between Ridgeland and Grand. One of our bigger high schools, which is where the entrance of the building is actually off Washington Street, which is, I think that's, is that the, it's the old East Campus, but is kind of the freshman center is what they call it. Children, or young adults, I like to call them, sometimes and not always mindful watching the cars coming back and forth. But we, as responsible drivers, we need to be mindful that they are crossing the streets. That is a place for probably roughly 2,000 young men and young ladies who are trying to get a good quality education. So I need for you to please be cautioned as Washington and Jackson, erected by the freshman center, used to be freshman center, old East Campus building, just be careful for our young men and young ladies. I know sometimes it's difficult, but at one point in time, we did the same thing. If not you, I know I did. Tonight, I am submitting appointments for department heads for Public Works and Community Development Block grant. One more thing, I would like to also call up Mr. David Motley. David, can you come up for a second? He's going to talk about the city's participation in this year's solar eclipse. And before he gets started.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I wasn't exactly sure if I was going to be on the hot seat for this, but I was certainly excited for the opportunity to unveil and highlight Waukegan Beach as a location for those of us still sticking around to see the solar eclipse. So thank you so much for your support. And of course, we saw Alderman May down there, and we saw Alderman Villalobos, and also Clerk Kilkelly. So in essence, today, we did a publicity stunt down at the Waukegan Beach where we let people know that they could come down and get one of 200 free pair of glasses. We actually gave away 500 pair to make sure that we compensated for as many people as possible coming to the event. We also made sure that anyone who came down got information about upcoming activities taking place in Waukegan, and also the calendar of events and attractions taking place at the Genesee Theater in September and October. Again, it was a great way for us to reach out to the community, to get them engaged and see if they would support this type of thing. And it's just another one of those activities that we have down at the lake, specifically being hosted at the Steiner Pavilion. And we had probably about 1,000 people through the doors today to come and enjoy. To show, obviously, that tourism is important to Waukegan and that people are able and willing to make it to the lakefront for these types of amazing experience-based events.
Thank you. Thank you, David. All right. Thank you very much. Lastly, I am thrilled to announce my appointment for the First Ward Alderman. She is a longtime resident, an incredibly capable individual, and most important, she's a wonderful person. With that said, I would like to turn the floor over to City Council to approve, I'm going to say hopefully approve, Dr. Sylvia Sams Bolton as the new First Ward Alderman. Ms. Bolton, like, step up, please. I'm going to ask, hold on a second. Motion by Alderman Tempas, second by Alderman Seager. I talked to them early about it. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempus.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion to pass, please. Stand right there. Face the camera. Face the cameras. Turn left, please.
Right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Sylvia Sams Bolton.
Dr. Sylvia Sams Bolton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will.
Affirm that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the office of Alderman.
The duties of the office of Alderman.
For the city of Waukegan.
For the city of Waukegan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All right. Got the lefty, that's what I'm talking about. We get a motion by Alderman Newsome to seat.
Second by Alderman.
And second by Alderman May to seat. No, you gotta come on up now, it's showtime.
That's your seat now.
You got your packet, let's go.
All right, you got your packet. There's a motion on the floor, there's a motion on the floor in the second to seat the new First Ward Alderman. Aye. Motion is passing, carry. Welcome, Alderman.
Welcome.
All right.
We're at more audience time.
All right, audience time.
Hold on. We have the list. Yeah. We have three minutes. I'll put the timer on when you get up there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think maybe you can help us out after I'm finished, maybe you can talk up a little bit about more about your qualifications and different things like that. I guess part of, I guess part of why I'm here and I'm always, hopefully I can continuously remind you, is that I'm, I guess I'm wondering about the economic opportunities and the educational opportunities for the citizens, the children, the citizens. I mean, you've got a lot of children here, so it's like, what does their future look like? Not all of them's going to get to play soccer. But I guess, I guess when I was growing up, I wish I would have had a little bit more of mentorship, leadership in the community that would, and I also wish there was more doors to living wage jobs. I feel like many of these big businesses are coming here, not paying a living wage and taking the monies overseas. You can see it, Walmarts, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm also just concerned as to what's your, what's your plan? Which, you know, some governments have 10-year plans for government. It's very easy for me to come and throw rocks or whatever, but I guess I'm looking for documentation as to how are you going to build a city? You know, you're building a, I mean, you're talking about building roads and bridges and water systems, but I'm wondering how does this all trickle down to the people who haven't had those opportunities? You know, they haven't had the opportunities to get the full schooling, you know, the minimum wage workers? How do, how do those people benefit by you being in office? So that's, that's, that's one of my main concerns. But I also want you to consider revisiting, I want you to also consider revisiting the police issue, because you might not need a committee or something, but I did ask that you have quarterly statements brought to this body to talk about what's going on, arrests, complaints, et cetera, et cetera. And if, if you look at the, the insurance committee, it says $9 million. You know, you're, you're voting on a $9 million claim, you know, police brutality or not police brutality, whatever you want to call it. I mean, should the city be paying out $9 million regarding police issues? So I just, I just feel like I'm a refugee, I fled Waukegan so that I could be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Am I safe to return here?
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Dan Quinn. Dan.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is unusual for me to speak at a city council meeting. I usually do my talking in committee meetings where I can have a dialogue rather than a monologue. But today, I was late for the finance committee meeting and therefore I would just want to make a statement. We've been talking about fiscal responsibility, we've been talking about deficit budgets, and yet the finance committee has approved a $504,000 in assessments. Now, this is for people to come in and tell us that our streets are bad, that our buildings need repair, and that our bridges are in sad shape. So we're going to pay someone, and this is not just one, this is a combination of all of them, $504,000, 500, I'm sorry, $504,000 and $500, just to come in and give us an assessment of things that our Public Works Department should be doing, things that our Building Department should be doing, and things that we should have the inside, inside expertise to do those things, rather than outsource it to engineering firms, architecture and designer firms, and consulting engineers. That's my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, council members, and audience. The 10th Annual Wine and Art Stroll is this Saturday, August 26th, from 5 to 9 in the downtown district. Registration will be at Jack Benny Plaza. Tickets are $22 for members, $25 for non-members. And if you'd like additional information regarding the Wine and Art Stroll, please feel free to call the Waukegan office at 847-623-6650. Thank you.
What time is that again? Give us the time again, one more time.
Saturday, this evening, from 5 to 9.
Saturday, this Saturday.
This Saturday, August 26th.
5 to 9.
5 to 9 in the downtown district.
And the cost is?
$22 for members of Main Street, $25 for non-members.
I always like to repeat, you get the message better that way.
No problem, Ms. Dolan.
Thank you. Maria Mendoza.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Mendoza, and I am Miss Waukegan 2017. During my reign, I have realized that as a young person, I'm capable of making a difference in my community. As of now, myself and my sister queens have each served over 100 hours of community service. Service including working the City of Waukegan table at a back-to-school event, and passing out books to all children passing by, to participating in a walkathon to help raise money for Beacon Place. It's amazing how much of an impact we can have on someone by just donating a little bit of our time. Being able to attend these events has also given me the opportunity to enhance my communication skills, which is something that I will be taking with me as I will be attending UIC this fall and majoring in Business Administration. This pageant isn't the typical beauty pageant you might be thinking of, it's completely different. It's not about how you look on the outside, rather the type of person you are on the inside. We have a passion to serve our community by giving back through community service work, as well as through our individual service projects. Each of us have a platform that we feel very passionate about, and we are expected to create an event that brings awareness to our platform. I'm truly passionate about the arts. As an artist and a musician, I'm looking to get the youth more involved in the arts. And what a better place to promote my platform than in the city of Waukegan where there's art and artists all around us. I will be hosting a fundraiser on October 21st at Art Walk. It will benefit Bravo Waukegan, which is an organization that helps provide instruments and music to the youth in our community. Being involved in my community is something that I will be doing long after my reign is over, and I hope that through this program, I can inspire others just like myself to do the same. It has been an honor to serve as your Miss Waukegan 2017. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. For those who don't know me, I am Jaslyn Gallegos, Junior Miss Waukegan 2017. This year, I was given the amazing opportunity to serve the city of Waukegan. I am here to tell you how serving as Junior Miss Waukegan has given me the platform to stop wishing and to start doing. It has provided me many opportunities I could have never dreamed of. When my sister queens and I first started off our year, we had a plan to make sure we are remembered in the honorable way. We are able to accomplish this by using Mrs. Lutz's leadership and connect with the community through local events and social media to help us spread the word. This allowed us to network with city officials, build new friendships, as well as gain more confidence overall. My favorite part of this year so far was attending a beach cleanup. During my time there, I had several children come up to me wanting to know how they could fulfill their dreams and become a queen. I can say the 100-plus hours of volunteering were worth it, and as a result, I know I have made myself proud and my family proud, but I hope I have made you all proud as well. You may be thinking, how did these girls manage school, extracurriculars, family, and being a city ambassador? The truth is, it keeps us very busy, but it has helped us grow into young women leaders of Waukegan that we are today. As part of my platform, my goal is to make sure our community members are aware of how important it is to keep our lakefront clean. By doing so, I will be hosting the first annual City of Waukegan Beach Cleanup with the Queens event in partnership with the Alliance for the Great Lakes at Waukegan South Beach near Steiner Pavilion on September 16th from 10 a.m. to noon. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see everyone there.
Thank you, Ms. Gallegos.
Hi, good evening. My name is Adamara Sanchez, and I am Little Miss Waukegan 2017. This year, as a queen, it's, have been able to volunteer at many community-wide events such as Art Walk Beach Cleanups, Coaching Girls on the Run, the Waukegan Public School Back-to-School Event. A few of my favorites include walking for Beacon Place. Beacon Place is important to me because Beacon Place helps me with my homework. Volunteering at the Waukegan Public Library is especially important to me because their programs help my family and I, for example, helping my sister and I with homework. Also, all the books, magazines you could ask for. Did I mention they're free for Waukegan residents? I would like to spread the word about all the wonderful programs the Waukegan Public Library has to offer our community. I will be there with my sister queens on September 2027 from 6 to 7 p.m., working with Miss Sandy, a part of the bilinguals family storytimes. I hope to see you there. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your 2017 Little Miss Waukegan.
I'm going to try to get everybody in there. Okay. Alderman Valco, I can't see you. How are you?
He moved all the way.
Okay, one, two, three, smile. Homework, smile. Got it. All right.
Nice job.
Awesome job, young ladies. Awesome job.
It's such a hard thing to follow such beautiful little girls. But I am Basim Iftikhar. I am the president of Islamic Foundation North, which is located on Oak Plain Road in Waukegan. I thought when I came here, I would just sit down, watch, but what a wonderful evening this has turned out to be, with so many good things happening. The purpose of my visit, actually, was a heartfelt thanks to the city of Waukegan, to all the people who serve the city of Waukegan, the mayor himself, who was so kind and gracious to come visit us for two days in a row, and for the many police officers, the firemen, the schoolteachers, the volunteers, the students who come by to visit our Church of Islamic Faith. Allow me in my brief couple of minutes to give you a little background. Islam, which is practiced by over 1.25 million people roughly throughout the world, billion people, has its roots also in the U.S. for many, many years. In our location, we were here at the Naval Academy about 30 years ago, first started with a group of a dozen people, mostly physicians, and then we moved on and on with more people coming in, so that today we are located on a very busy street on Oak Plain Road, and we have paying members of about 620 last count. And in addition to that, we have larger congregation days like the Eid, et cetera, over 2,000 people that we use in the sports complex for lack of rotation. The beauty of this country is very widely appreciated in the community, because what you saw today was an example of democracy in action. Many who came into this country were hoping to get this thing, which was denied to them in their countries abroad of their birth. So I'm particularly grateful to be a part of this institution, part of City of Waukegan, and part of this wonderful country, the USA of US, America. So I again express my gratitude to all those people who have expressed support. Some of the rhetoric that has happened in the recent past has caused some concern in our community, but thank God, one God for everybody, thank God that we have not had any action that was considered as any violence or anything to us. So I just wanted to express, on behalf of my community, many thanks to everybody who has supported us and continues to help us. Thank you very, very much. May God bless.
Les Deffno.
I'll relinquish my time to the next speaker.
I'm sorry?
I'll relinquish my time to the next speaker.
You don't want to do yours? No? Okay.
That's a first.
Thank you so very much. First, let me congratulate our new Alderman, Dr. Bolton. Pray that God will continue to bless you to serve well. Thank you so much. And thank you also for the night and giving him an opportunity to do the invocation. I was honored to be here. And I want to thank you also, Mayor Cunningham, for allowing me to serve on your steering committee, and also for attending our state convention last week down in Puroyos. Thank you so very much. And also, I'd like to thank you again for the committee, for what you have done for our chief of diversity position in the city, and I pray that that will continue, because from what I heard here tonight, I see there is a need, because we are considering voting on a $1.1 million contract to Peter Baker to waiver, to lower the compliance goes from 30, I think, down to 10%. And I just find that very disheartening when we have a city that's over three-quarter minorities and we have to compromise that position. That extra 20% can mean food on somebody's table that need a job, and help to get these people off the streets, because we need work. And this is a public works, public, 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 that means taxpayers. And we have over 200 young men and women of diverse group, male and female, trained in Chicagoland Laborers Union, at Local 150 Engineering Union out of Wilmington, that's designed to work in highway construction. And I just believe those students can work with Peter Baker to get this project done, because we just can't continue to give away economic dollars in our community. We have, we have a need for jobs, and I think every opportunity that we get to make that happen, we ought to do. happen, we ought to do that. So I wish the councilman's well as she go through this administration, and thank you so much for allowing me to grace you today with the word of God. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Gas. Angelo Kyle. Angelo? There you go.
Good evening to the mayor and to the city council, also to the citizens of Waukegan. It's good to be here. I want to congratulate Sylvia. Sylvia is the last person I would ever expect to get involved with politics. Grew up with Sylvia at Shiloh Baptist Church many, many years ago, so congratulations. I rise today to personally thank the mayor, Mayor Cunningham, for his unwavering support in Lake County Afro Fest 2017. This year was one of our largest events in previous years. Last year, we had some rain and whatnot, but this Saturday was perfect weather. We had approximately 1,000 people on the Waukegan Lakefront Steiner Pavilion. And I wanted to thank Mayor Cunningham for allowing the city of Waukegan to be a sponsor this year and participate in your unwavering support and, of course, addressing the audience on Saturday. Thank you so much. I also wanted to thank David Motley. David Motley was instrumental as well in the operations of the event. He helped with everything from organization to format and to the setup of the event. And he helped us with everything from putting up tents to putting up and taking down tables. So I wanted to thank Dave Motley for his support as well. Also, Public Works Department, Police Department, Water Department as well. Afro Fest is the largest one-day outdoor African-American event, not only in the city of Waukegan, but in Lake County. And I'm proud to have coordinated this event for now my 34th year in doing so. So, you know, I came right out of diapers, straight into planning Afro Fest. Thank you, the alderman that participated as well. I saw Alderman Newsome. I'm not sure if any of the others were there. Oh, yes, Alderman Bolton, thank you for your attendance as well as the mayor. This year, we had everything from gospel, blues, jazz, R&B, soul, pop, hip-hop, rap, fashion shows, poetry. We gave away 200 book bags filled with school supplies to 200 kids who were there in attendance as well. We also had car shows, motorcycle shows, and 32 vendors and 36 performances at that event. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chris Rhode.
Good evening. My name is Chris Rhodey, and I am a resident of the Third Ward. I come before the city council today both as an admin for the local Bernie Kratz of Northern Illinois and as a private citizen. As the admin of the local Bernie Kratz, I want to take the time to thank local leaders, Alderman Villalobos, Waukegan School Board Member Brandon Ewing, and Lake County Board Member Vance Wyatt for attending at least one of the three events we hosted this past month. I'd also like to thank Alderman Taylor for posting on her ward's Facebook page our event to help spread awareness. It is because of your engagement with our groups' activities that more members of our community are now engaged at state-level politics, and I thank you. As a private citizen, I've come before you today to talk about the topic that was discussed last city council meeting that concerned me. On the topic of FOIA, I was concerned about the city considering an ordinance that would allow a maximum fee to be assessed for FOIA requests. There is no doubt that any request requires time and effort to accomplish. Particularly large requests can be burdensome on the people executing the request, but requiring a $100 fee is not the path forward. According to the state's website on this topic, the first 50 pages of information request is free with a 50-cent charge for any page thereafter. In order for a request to require a $100 fee, that would, the request would have to be 717 pages long. With this ordinance, what this ordinance would do is restrict access to government. Alderman Moiseo said clearly that it is not his intention to restrict access to Waukegan government, and I believe him at his word. Unfortunately, that is what this ordinance would do. Furthermore, the request of a waiver also restricts access in the sense that the petitioner would have to wait weeks, possibly months, before their waiver request is voted upon. Simply put, what this ordinance says is that the people of Waukegan, to the people of Waukegan is, if you have money and the time, you can have access. I'm not here simply to complain about this topic. I'm also here to offer paths forward to avoid an unjust fee. The city can make more information accessible on its website. Also, it is within the guidelines of FOIA for the public body to ask the requester to narrow their request to a more appropriate inquiry. Furthermore, Waukegan can have a list of topics or categories available to Requesters so they can review the topics they are interested in. This will save man-hours by the public body from having to clarify what is being looked for, also making it easier for Requesters to focus their FOIA requests. I hope that these points that I have made make it clear that the city of Waukegan has a path forward to servicing FOIA laws while avoiding unfair fees that would restrict access to its citizens. It is my hope that the alderman who voted this ordinance through committee will reconsider their position when it comes to vote before the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes audience time.
Motion, item, it'll be number three, item A. A motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor to approve the regular meetings from August the 7th, 2017. Any questions? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Newsome. Any questions? Must be a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Number four, resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. Alrighty. Presentation by Heart of the City. Where we at? All right. Step on up. Here's to the podium right there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, and city council. My name is Brandon Massey. I am the chief operating officer at Heart of the City. We are a youth development organization here in Waukegan. Our office is located right here in downtown Waukegan, and we serve the youth of Waukegan through the game of soccer. Our organization's mission is that we help our kids to be competitive on the field, successful in the classroom, and productive here in the community. And we've had a lot of successes over the summer, helping kids be successful in the classroom. 25 of our high school kids recently completed a six-week SAT prep course so that they are preparing themselves to be ready for college. Working with our kids to be productive in the community, we have a big community service event that we are working with Art Cobb and with Alderman Villalobos for a downtown cleanup for all of our kids and their families who want them to learn the importance of education and the importance of giving back and serving here in the Waukegan community. But tonight, we are here to recognize some of our kids who, along with being successful students and learning and growing in academics, and along with community service that they've done over the last year, they have been extremely successful and competitive on the soccer field. Our North Central United teams are our club programs, and they compete at the highest levels of youth soccer here in the state of Illinois in the Midwest region. And we are proud to say that they compete at the very highest level nationally. Our U-13 girls and U-14 boys, we have not one, but two U.S. Youth Soccer National Championship teams. And I want to recognize our two coaches of those teams, Coach Sal Gloria and Coach Jose Gomez, who work tirelessly with our kids. I would bet that you cannot find two better coaches anywhere else in the country, and we are very proud that they work here with our kids in Waukegan. So we want to thank the mayor, thank the city council for inviting us here to recognize the many successes that our kids are having both on and off the field. With that, at this time, I'd like to ask both of the teams and our coaches to come up.
Okay, it's gonna be really hard to get everyone in the picture. So you know how you do your team photographs for some people, you gotta take a knee?
Yeah.
Gotta take a knee. Put those drummies in the middle. Put the drummies in the middle here so we can see them. And I hope everyone brought their wide-angle cameras. Maybe you have a slide or two. Maybe you could be like in the middle.
I'll be in the middle.
We also gonna present our...
They can't see me.
...part of the city. Part of the city. One of you can hold that. You're gonna have to go in the middle here. Everybody talking right. I can't hear. Is that good? Okay.
Tell you what, there we go. Come back, come back, come back.
Okay, so Jay is our official photographer here, so we need to get our official photograph for the city. And everyone's gonna fit, almost. Okay, I'll stay there because everyone else has to. If any parents want to go over to the middle of the aisle here, they can do that. Okay, mayor. All right. You good? There we go.
Oak Street, why don't you come here, presentation?
Just get in place. I'm sorry? Just get in place.
You're in queue.
Oh. Just get in place. I'm here. It's five minutes, right?
Three.
Oh, three. Talk really fast, lucky you.
There you go.
Hello, city of Waukegan. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Maria Barnett, and I am representing Oak Street Health. And you might think, what is this business? I've never heard of them. Well, we're not here yet, and the mayor came to an event that we had and invited me to come to the city council and tell the people of Waukegan and the city council in particular about our company. We are primary care centers for adults on Medicare. And more than that, we are the most exciting healthcare company in America, and I say that with lots of confidence. And we are so thrilled that we get to make Waukegan the location for our newest center. We are opening, seeing patients on Medicare, starting in October. And some people might think, oh, healthcare, there's a lot of that. But we promised the people of Waukegan that adults on Medicare have never seen healthcare quite the kind that we offer. One metric we like to give is that the net promoter score is something that people, that brands and companies use to say how popular they are. You've got very, very popular brands like Apple, Costco, Nordstrom. They're in the 60s and 70s. And healthcare in general is a three, which is not that great. And Oak Street Health, we are proud to say, we're up at a 92. So people love being patients. More than giving them a great patient experience, though, we are very rooted in the community. We hire locally. We are already hiring. Go to oakstreethealth.com. And we make people feel at home. We speak the cultural and literal language. We have already hired Spanish-speaking providers so that our adults on Medicare in the Waukegan community who are bilingual have that option so they can feel comfortable coming to us. In just a little over three years, we have gone from zero to 20 to now 24 centers in three states, six markets, and 30,000 patients. And we've reduced hospitalizations by over 40% in just one year. So we're really committed to keeping people happy, healthy, and out of the hospital. We bring jobs, we bring activities, and we have a lot of excitement for Waukegan. We think this is a really special city. See, the city of progress. We agree, we want to progress with you. You will see a lot of our green vans, all of our patients get driven to and from their appointments. And they get to come to our centers, and there are no wait times. They can get same-day and next-day appointments for their doctor, so no more calling the doctor and hearing that, we'll see you in two weeks, when either it won't matter or it really won't matter. So no more visits to the ER. You can come see your doctor. And we also offer, in across our current centers, we offer over 10,000 free, fun, educational events right in our community centers. We're not just a doctor's office. We really see ourselves as a hub for the community, and that's why I'm here today, to tell you that you're gonna be seeing a lot more of Oak Street, you're gonna be hearing a lot more from us. We want to partner with the community organizations that serve the patients on Medicare. We pride ourselves in going into medically underserved communities and bringing something that's so necessary in our communities. So thank you for the time, and thank you for letting me tell you a little bit about what we bring. And if you have any questions, the mayor knows where to find me. But we also are so thrilled to come, start serving the people of Waukegan, starting in October. Thank you. Oh, yeah, so it's, we're at 3210 Grand, which is near Green Bay and Grand, by the Walgreens. As the mayor told me to tell everybody, just say by the Walgreens, and they'll know what you mean. So, and then there's... So, yeah, by the Walgreens. And you'll be seeing us there.
Yeah, and it's, for those who, I always often say this, it's located just west of the old Reed Randall Ford Car Dealership. Is that correct?
That's right.
There it is. So all of us who, the address, we don't know. We do know locations, right? Those historical marks, so thank you very much. And honestly, in the future, you have to say it that way. You'll get the, oh, now I know.
I remember the Walgreens, but I forgot the Reed Randalls. I'll make a note of it.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you all.
All right, bye-bye. All right, item, item C. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Seager. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Seeger, to confirm the appointment of Larissa Garland as Community Development Blog Grant Director. Larissa, I'd like to stand up. Hold on a second. Are there any questions to the motion? Is it a voice, or do a roll call? Roll call. Roll call.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alright, motion's been passed and carried, congratulations, Ms. Garland, as our new director of public... Did you wanna say anything? No. Yes, no, it's on you. You can, yeah.
Thank you for the opportu, this opportunity. I will serve you well in the community. I look forward to just the opportunity and the challenge, so...
Thank you.
I'm here, any questions, please come see me.
Thank you very much. Congratulations again. And I hear your mom is here, mom, stand up, mom. Stand up, mom. Larissa's mother, stand up, there it is, hey, mom. And most of you don't know, her husband has been a long-time foreman at Waukegan Public Works, Mr. Chris Garland, stand up, sir. Thank you. Alright, thank you, Larissa, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item D. Motion by, again, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Seeger, to confirm the appointment of Michael Hewitt as a Public Works Director. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
No.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Oh, yes, yes.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's been passed and carried. Mr. Hewitt, congratulations. Thank you, thank you, sir. As many of you know, Mr. Hewitt has been serving as interim Public Works Director. We thank you for your service, we look forward to working with you as well. Thank you, sir. Item E. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve the resolution dedicated to Waukegan, correction, I'm gonna put a motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve the resolution dedicated to Waukegan Dunes as the official name of the city-owned area east of Seahorse Drive and north of the breakwater that is on the north side of South Beach. I know y'all. Are there any questions to the motion? Do you, see, we give a, Lisa, you wanna give an explanation? The reason I'm saying, I corrected this so everybody know, this has really been Alderman May's, I'm gonna say baby for a long time, and she knows a lot more about it, 'cause she's been very intimately involved with just about everything that's happened on our beach, so Alderman May, if you'd like to explain?
Sure, thank you. So, we did receive a letter from the Waukegan Harbor Citizens Advisory Group requesting this change. There is a group that's been meeting in Waukegan of many governmental agencies, from the county, the port, Park District, we all get together, and it's been about six years now that we get together, and every mayor has participated, and I'm so grateful to Mayor Cunningham for continuing this, letting this group move forward, and with his blessing. And so, what we, what we've discovered is that when people try to find Waukegan Beach, just through a simple Google search, they have us called North Beach Park. And so, people end up, they can't find their way to our beach, they're going to Beach Park, there, it's just been very confusing. And since we have this very rich, dunal area that has, we've been blessed with by nature, you know, there's, there are no beaches in Illinois anymore with these dunes. And so, because of nature, and because of the movement of our sand and our lake, we have this beautiful dune land on our North Beach area, and there's endangered species in there, and whether it's flora, fauna, so it's just a really, it's another way to draw attention to our lakefront, to create more interest, more tourism. People are very into birding, and a lot of people come to our beach for just those activities. So, North Beach, South Beach, we have all these terms that we use down there, I think Waukegan Dunes really sets us apart, you think of Indiana Dunes, think of Waukegan Dunes now, and it's a way to really landmark and preserve that area. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, I, we need a, we need a voice, do we have, do we call, do we get the...
We didn't do the roll call.
Okay, roll call, please. Thank you, Alderman May.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alright, item five. Alderman May, could you go ahead and take the labor relations?
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Labor relations, ma'am, earlier this evening, and I made the motion to approve, we revise, then modify the current collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and the Waukegan Police Benevolent Labor Committee Unit Number 42, to add the Kelly Time for the random of understanding, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, and second by Alderman Valco, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's been passed and carried. Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee did, in fact, meet this evening, and they voted to approve the Lake County, Illinois CVB, Visit Lake County 2017 Tourism Community Marketing Partnership, for the amount of $28,750 that comes out of budget line item 10106-024443. Those of you in the audience, Visit Lake County and the City of Waukegan have maintained a longstanding marketing partnership to tap into the lucrative visitor market. Visitors to Lake County spend over $1 billion annually on shopping, dining, hotels, recreation, entertainment, and more. Visit Lake County reports annually on the marketing deliverables and the return on investment Waukegan has received from the partnership with the organization over the past 12-month period, and I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, item B.
Item B, the Finance Committee voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into an agreement, a grant agreement, excuse me, with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, everybody knows it is the EPA, for the Sustainable Shoreline, Shoreline Green Infrastructure Implementation Program. The total program cost is $390,000, with $375,000 in federal funding, and $15,000 in kind costs for a local match from us. Grant expenditures come out of line item 251-825-124489, and grant revenues line The objective for the project is to improve nearshore water quality at Waukegan Municipal Beach with green infrastructure watershed improvements. These improvements will include bio swales in the parking area and public access to reduce non-point source runoff and pollution at the beach. Again, it's a $390,000 grant, $375 from the government, $15,000 from Waukegan, and it can be in-kind, so it doesn't have to be monetary, and I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, item C.
Uh, next mo, item is, the committee voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a professional services contract with RRP Inc., Architects, Designers, for the purposes of performing an assessment of and making arrangements to, or excuse me, making recommendations to improve the city's facilities for an amount not to exceed the $51,700. Funding from the line item 100-912-724438. And what this is, the city invited firms to submit statements of qualifications via public posting to provide professional services and the assessment of and recommendations to improve certain facilities. The firms presented to the committee for approval were reviewed by a committee, including planning, public works, water department, and senior-level staff. The assessments will begin immediately with the reports expected in late November or early December, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Bolton, any questions to the motion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Next item, Your Honor, the committee voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a professional, professional services contract with Ciorba Group, Consulate Engineers, for the purposes of performing an assessment of and making recommendation to improve the city's bridges for an amount not to exceed $21,800. Funding from line item 228-9228-24435. And what this one was, the city invited firms to submit statements of qualifications via public posting to provide professional services and the assessment and recommendations to improve certain bridges. That did include, for those of you in the audience, Greenwood, Belvedere, and some of the other structures also, and I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Seeger, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, Your Honor, was the committee voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a professional services contract with Robinson Engineering Limited for the purposes of performing an assist, assessment of and making recommendations to improve the city's infrastructure for the amount not to exceed $431,000. And the funding from this line item 202-120224435. And what this was, is the city invited firms to submit statements of qualifications via public posting to provide professional services and the assessments of and recommendations to improve the city's infrastructure. The firms presented to the committee for approval were reviewed by a committee, including planning, public works, water department, and senior-level staff, and I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion?
Mayor, just, not question, but just clarification. Alderman Valco, could you just list down what the, the scope of work is? 'Cause this one is significantly larger than the previous two, so their scope of work's a lot larger, which means the values, the cost is a lot more, you know, the alleys, the sidewalks, the scope of work that they're doing? Or I, I can bring it up to you.
Go ahead, you can keep doing it, go ahead.
Okay.
And it should've been, Alderman, it was a part of your...
Oh, I know it's a part, but for the public.
For the public?
For the public, okay. Which one was, sorry, I added, Robinson, okay. So... Just so the public knows, this amount is significantly larger, because they are gonna be looking at our pavement management, our alleys, our water plant and distribution system, wastewater list stations and collection system, our stormwater system, our sidewalks, our streetlights, our traffic signals, our street signs, our city-owned parking lots, and our cemetery. So, hence the larger cost, so the public knows. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Alderman Valco, I'm gonna add to that. I, I recently, I, I had asked for this to be sent over to my office from the County of Lake, and what it says here, it says, "An executive summary of 2017 through 2022 Proposed Highway Improvement Program." This is what we should have at our Public Works Department. And we should be going by this to determine, you know, when we, what streets we're gonna fix, how we're gonna fix them, what date, the cost of them, all that should be laid out in a five-year program. We're in the process of getting ready for that with this assessment, and this, just not for our streets. We call it underground and above ground. This is gonna be, you know, basically, Pastor, please excuse me, I know it is not, this is gonna be the bible for Public Works when it comes for infrastructure. What this also is gonna get us ready for, I know there has been talk that, on a national level, that it'd become a, a national infrastructure program, funding. Well, if we were ready, if they were ready to assess or give monies to cities, counties, and states for funding, essentially, we would not be ready. We wouldn't be prepared to show them what we need. This document will help us. So, we'll get ready to talk to our state representatives, or our state senators, to our U.S. congressmen, to our U.S. senators, then we have something to show them what's a priority for us. This is very, very important, will be an important assessment for, for whatever we do for the next five years. And I'm assuming, probably in the next two or three years, we would have to then revise that, because things would've changed. So, that's why it's important that we do this assessment right now. I, I received something earlier that says, I know the assessment cost was $431,000. I received today that we spent $450,000 per square mile on our, our roads only. We need to know where we're gonna, where we're going to go spending money, how much we're gonna spend over the next five years. That is just what not only counties, other cities, and states do, there are some who've been planning out for 10 or 15 years. This is gonna be a very important document for the City of Waukegan for the future, as to where we're going, and how we're gonna spend, and more importantly, how we're gonna budget that. I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Alderman Valco, and we have a motion by Alderman Valco, and a second by Alderman Newsome. Any questions, other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Last thing, Your Honor, from Finance, the committee voted to authorize the IT Director to extend the Cayenta CMS Oracle Financial and Utility Database Maintenance Contract for another year in the amount not to exceed $52,900. Funding from the budget item is 10103-724412, and 555-915-924412. For those of you on the council that aren't on the committee, and those in the audience, this is something, it's a renewal of a maintenance contract, it's nothing new. That's all we have, and, Your Honor, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item number seven, Insurance Committee, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle police liability claim C645-12-00777-01, for an amount not to exceed $85,000, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman May, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Now, Alderman Taylor, this, that, item A was for workers' comp, correct?
That was for the Hernandez case.
Okay, alright, I apologize. Alright, item B.
Motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle police liability claim C645- dash one-five dash one-zero-zero-seven-six dash zero-one for an amount not to exceed nine million dollars, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Valco.
No, I...
Yes, I, I know, I caught myself, Alderman Valco. A motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions to the motion? Um, yes, well, uh, let me just briefly, we're going to ask corporation counsel just to say exactly what this is for, okay?
This is a settlement related to a police misconduct case. Costs on this were assessed in such a way that nine million dollars is the settlement of which the city of Waukegan is responsible for six million. No additional money is actually being expended by the settlement.
And this is for the Strong case, Jason? And this would be for the Jason Strong case?
Did he get a year?
I'm sorry?
Did he get a year or no?
No, no year. All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Stay.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
The motion's passed and carried. Public Works.
Thank you, your honor. Item A, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with RRP Inc. to provide professional services for, for full architectural services for roof and rooftop air handler unit RTU replacement, including design phase, construction documents, bidding and negotiation phase, and site observation at the water plant for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Funds are being charged to line item five-five-five-nine-one-six-zero-two-seven-zero-one-eight. And this is for the remaining portion of the roof at Public Works that was replaced in 2012, and I so move.
Question, your honor?
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Villalobos. There's a question by Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor?
I know this is to finish up the roof, but is that something that could wait until after we get the assessments done? Because that is part of the thing that we're going to be looking at. Would it be more worthwhile to hold off on that, or is it something that has to be immediately attended to?
Right now, they're leaking, so...
Brian, you want to address that? Yeah, and this was something that we had already started, so we need to finish it up, and, and that's where that's, but, go ahead, Brian, please.
That is correct. This was for, this is for replacing the remaining roof, which was part of the CIP, which was this year's CIP, which is actually before the assessment. This portion was, was not included in the assessment because we were already proceeding down this, because we had the, the plans to do the roof this year.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the purchase of water meter transmitters and valves to the low-qualified bidder United Systems of Benton, Kentucky, for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Funds for this purchase will be charged to line item five-five-five-nine-one-five-five-two-five-four-six-eight in the amount of five thousand dollars, and line item five-five-five-seven-four-four-zero-zero inventory in the amount of fifteen thousand.
No. Oh, okay. I apologize, I was looking at the wrong one. All right.
And I so move.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Newsom, and second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item C, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the purchase of water meters to the low-qualified bidder Badger Meter Company of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Funds for this purchase will be charged to line item five-five-five-nine-one-five-five-two-five-four-six-eight in the amount of ten thousand dollars, and line item five-five-five-seven-four-four-zero-zero inventory in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the bid for the Carrier Chiller compressor replacement to the low-qualified bidder McDonald Mechanical Services of Waukegan, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand ninety-one dollars. Funds for this will be charged to line item one-zero-zero-nine-one-two-seven-two-six-four-nine-four, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the bid for the 2017 street maintenance and a temporary waiver of the local hiring ordinance. We are requesting council's permission to approve a temporary modification of the city's local hiring ordinance to reduce the percentage of local hires to ten percent for the award of the 2017 street maintenance bid. The reason for our request of the waiver is situations where application of the requirements of this section might violate the law, unduly deter potential bids in public works projects, or create problems with the public works project startup, progress, and completion. The big, the bid opening was August sixteenth, 2017, and the lone qualified bidder was Peter Baker and Son of Lake Bluff, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed one million one hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and five cents. Funds for this contract will be charged to line item three-one-two-one-three-one-two-two-seven-six-one-nine. Line item five-five-five-nine-one-six-zero-two-seven-zero-four-three. Line item five-five-five-nine-one-six-zero-two-seven-zero-six-five. Line item five-five-five-nine-one-six-zero-two-seven-six-nine-two. And line item two-three-nine-one-two-three-nine-two-six-four-nine-two, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton. Are there any questions to the motion?
Yes, not a question, but a statement.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Taylor.
I do understand why people are concerned about us only doing ten percent, and, and the reason in this case, I believe, is that we are late to the bid process because we've had a change in administration. So I believe in this case, it's fine to accept this, but I would like us in the future to make sure that we are honoring where we do hire more local people, and I, and I believe that that can happen. But because we, we're now into mid-August, we need to get these roads done, so we need to move on and, and get this process done.
Any other questions? I, I do, I'm going to add to that, and I was probably one of the, as a legislator then, one of the chief persons to really push to have this put into our ordinance. But I can assure you, to those local hires in city of Waukegan, that as the chief administrator for the city of Waukegan, this will be closely watched by myself and our staff, because we do believe when you hire local, you, I think, and that's just my personal opinion, you get a better product. Why? Because they live here. They have a major stake here, and I'm not doubting the work or workmanship of others. I, I just know when, when you live on that block and have to ride down that street, you have a different way of doing things. That's just my belief, and I'm going to stick to it. Those are my comments on that, and we'll go from there. Alderman Newsom.
We had someone from Public Works speak, is he still here?
Patrick.
Patrick?
Yeah, he's here.
Being that Peter Baker was the only, the sole bidder for this, and then there's some indication in here where, are we having a corporation counsel look into this, whether this is, it says, potentially violating the law?
Well, because it's an ordinance, we have an ordinance on the books right now, and we would be violating our own ordinance, so...
The ordinance puts into place a procedure for the city council to waive what is it, and that's, that's apparently the language that Public Works believe best reflected, that the council can make the finding that, that this project in and of itself is going to create the problem. So the, the language in the ordinance reflects that the council can make the finding to waive this based on situations where it may violate the law, comma, unduly deter potential bids, comma, so they're, they're actually separate issues.
Okay.
Any other comments? Thank you, Patrick, just in case. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item F.
Resolution to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Swelco for recycling for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Funds for this will be charged to line item two-one-eight-one-two-one-eight-two-four-four-two-zero, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, and second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item G, resolution to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Waukegan and Swelco. The agreement is in regards to recycling and will become a revenue generator for the city, and I so move.
Can we read it?
Yes, we've already received our first check as well, so, here. Did you read it?
Let's get a motion. Motion by, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest. Questions, Alderman?
Do you have a question?
He's, he's reading it right now. It's okay, read it, I'd like to read it again. No problem. The agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Roll, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item H, motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute a resolution to appoint Mayor Sam Cunningham to the Board of Directors to the Solid Waste Agency of Lake County and Mike Hewitt as an alternate, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
That's all, your honor.
That's it on, on Public Works. Thank you, Alderman Newsom. Reports and communications. Motion to approve monthly treasure report for July 2017. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Your honor, can I make a motion to seat Alderman Mozzio?
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, to seat Alderman Mozzio. All right, Alderman Mozzio, we're on item number eleven, new business. We didn't vote on it here.
Yeah, we, you did, treasures report. Mm-hmm.
All right, item eleven, item A. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Mozzio, to approve under payments dated August twenty-first, 2017, in a total amount of one million two hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Mozio to approve regular payroll dated August the eighteenth, twenty-seventeen, in a total amount, total amount of one million, five hundred and one thousand, six hundred and forty-seven, and fifty-nine cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item C. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Seager to approve one-time police department cash out, the listed names on the agenda, payroll dated August eighteen, twenty-seventeen, in a total amount of five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents. Questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Newsome to approve Little Fort Lions Club request to hold its candy days, October thirteenth and fourteenth, in accordance with the Lions of Illinois statewide fundraising. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carry. Motion to appro, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest to approve Waukegan firefighter request to hold a fundraiser for the Muscular Dysphagia Association on September first at the intersection of Grand, Grand Avenue and Green Bay Road from nine a.m. to three p.m. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carry. Item F. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve all outdoor special events. The sponsors have applied under the directive of non-city government use of city-owned buildings and venues. The event has been approved by the Outdoor Special Events Board. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carry. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Valco, to approve all block parties. There should be a voice, a voice count, correct? All those approve.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carry. We're on the ordinances. There being none closing items. Item A. Aldermen's time. Normally Alderman Bolton, we start on with, with the First Ward going down. Alderman Bolton.
Thank you, fellow residents of Waukegan. I just wanted to take this time to say thank you, and I want to thank you for the honor and the opportunity. Mayor Cunningham, I thank you for having faith in me and allowing me to take the torch of the First Ward. To my fellow Aldermen, I thank you for your vote and look forward to strengthening our city and empowering our residents. To the city staff, I appreciate your hard work, and I can't wait to work with you to achieve many successes. And to my neighbors in the First Ward and my friends, I'm here to serve you, ensure your safety, growth, and communication. Lastly, but certainly not least, to my husband, Apostle Dr. David Bolton, I thank you for your love, your support, and your prayers. I appreciate you, your kindness, and prayers. With God's help in, in this doing going forward, I look forward to incredible journey with you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And as I get settled in this new role, I invite the community to get in touch with me on Facebook, and that is First Ward Alderman Dr. Sylvia Sims Bolton. I'll read it again. First Ward Alderman Dr. Sylvia Sims Bolton. And my email is Sylvia.Bolton@WaukeganIL.gov. And my phone number is two-two-four, six-oh-seven, eight-four-four-five. And once again, it is two-two-four, six-oh-seven, eight-four-four-five. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Yes.
Alderman Mozio.
Yes, a couple of things. Alderman Bolton, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I look forward to being here. Sorry I was late, and I was not able to vote to approve you, but I look forward to working with you. Welcome aboard. A couple of things. These, we've had a problem or a rash of, I guess you'd call them garage sales, but they've turned not into garage sales, but corner stores. People aren't selling their, their stuff. They're selling laundry detergent and diapers and anything else you can get. Now, I have contacted the mayor when I have seen them, and of course, they're usually on the weekends. They're not, people aren't selling them on Monday and Tuesday. But I have contacted the mayor, and we have been able to, I think the mayor has either gone there himself, or myself, or someone else has gone there and explained to these people that you can't have this every week. You get three garage or yard sales a year, and that's for three days each one. So, and we, but we still need to get a better handle on it, and I have talked to the mayor about this. We've had good conversations. We're in the process of trying to get code enforcement on the weekends. I think all the Aldermen would agree up here, it'd be like having no police on the weekend. We, we all know there's code violations that happen on the weekends, and for whatever reason, we have not been able to get code enforcers on the weekend. It's been a far too long that we have not been able to do that. So I wanted to let the residents know, because I get a lot of calls about, hey, this is the fifth week in a row that these people are selling Tide and Pampers out of their yard. So, so we are aware of it, and I, I know the mayor is aware of it, and I've, like I said, we, we're in the process of trying to get this taken care of. It's not fair to the local stores and, and everything else. We all understand that. Another thing, real quick, I know the Swalco thing passed, and we've been back and forth. I've been with Swalco, I've been against Swalco. My only problem with Swalco is I want to make sure that we get some services for thirty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. What services are we getting from them that justifies that amount of money? And I'll, I'll be in touch with Mr. Hewitt and the mayor and whoever else to, to make sure, because we gotta get something for thirty-six thousand dollars. So, and, and, and you know what, Coach? You were right six years ago when you were beating your chest about, about it. And I was sort of on the fence, didn't quite know, and, you know, I wanted to give him a chance, but, you know, the more I think about it, you probably might have, we gotta get something for it. So, I, hopefully, we can, we can get that and get a good amount of service for thirty-six thousand dollars. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry I was late.
No, no. I understand the reason, believe, been there.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to start off by saying thank you to everyone that's here, present tonight, and coming to these meetings. There's a lot of regular faces here, so thank you for your commitment to be here in every, every single meeting. Alderman Bolton, welcome aboard. Look forward to having to sit down with you and have a chit-chat. I know your husband, and I'm pretty sure we've met two in the past. Couple of events coming up, a couple of things. There is a Waukegan Rally Against Hate this coming Wednesday at six p.m., and they're, they're meeting at the Lincoln's Bus, right across the street at the Lake County Building. This is in, this is in regards to the, the stuff we've been seeing in the media, the, the protesters and the violent crimes that have been happening in peaceful protests, and the Charlottesville and everything. So, I think it's important for us as Waukegans, we are a diverse, diverse community, we need to band together, and, you know, not just, we can't accept this type of behavior. So my colleagues on council, I'd invite you to come to this, too. I'm gonna be there. I actually was asked to speak at this rally, so I'm honored in that regard. So again, this is, this coming Wednesday at six p.m. at the Lincoln's Bus at the Lake County Building, right here across the street. Also, I want to bring up, so I have a dual role as a trustee for the library, because I was appointed by the previous mayor, as a, to kind of be the bridge between city council and the library board. And so I was asked to make mention of the new computer class on the main floor of the Waukegan Public Library. So I was given a statement to make for you guys, and I'm gonna read this to you. On Wednesday, August ninth, Waukegan Public Library celebrated the grand reopening of its main floor computer classroom. The classroom serves adult learners throughout the week in classes that cover everything from basic mouse and computer skills to use of the internet to becoming more competitive job seekers. The skills developed in these competency-based classes are transferable to work environments, and the, and students who complete the classes are eligible to win a refurbished laptop and a celebratory raffle. The classroom was the last remaining space on the main floor to be renovated. The rest of the floor was renovated in June of two thousand and fifteen. The classroom's remodel was funded by a generous gift from the estate of Elizabeth Whitlow. Ms. Whitlow was a longtime Waukegan resident who loved the library, not just for its circulated materials, but for the sense of community it provided. When she passed on, her niece Linda Skaggs wanted to recognize her aunt's longstanding relationship and love for the library, and investing in a new learning space was a great way to honor her commitment to education as a transformative force, too. The renovated classroom boasts additional workstations, upgraded technology, and a new floor plan that is conducive to effective teaching and learning. The library has already received positive feedback about the new space from staff members, class instructors and volunteers, and students. This year, the library is on track to serve at least three hundred adult learners through its digital literacy classes. And to paraphrase one of our team members, the new space is learner-focused and will support our adult learners as they take charge on their learning and work, and work to set and attain their own goals. So the Waukegan Public Library has systematically renovated its building to bring it more up-to-date and more modernized. This classroom was the last one, and for those who aren't aware out in public, I used to work for the library as well, and I actually oversaw the digital computer classes for about a year and a half. And compared to what the classroom was to now, they were able to offer twenty-five percent more seating, which equated to six more seats on the classroom. The computers themselves are, the computers are this big, actually, and they're right behind the monitor. They, IT did a great job of setting those up. So if you haven't had a chance, swing by the Waukegan Public Library, take a look at the new space. The cla, the computer classes are free to any, anybody and everyone who wants to sign up for them. So that's the Waukegan Public Library. And I'm talking about a couple of things I was able to do in the past two weeks of late that kind of opened my eyes a bit. I talk about community engagement and building community amongst ourselves, and so there was a neighborhood block party this past Saturday that I attended, and to Mr. Kyle's. I sorry you couldn't go to the Afro Fest. I got coupled in with the art walk and the community, the neighborhood block party, so I just couldn't find the space to come over, but next year, I promise you. So the block party was wonderful. This was the second year for this block, and it was really well-attended. These are people that lived each other, next to each other for years and did not know each other, and they're dancing, having a great time, sharing, breaking bread, and some of the residents were, said to me, thank you for helping us organize this. I did a small part in it. The heavyweight was, most of the heavyweight was lifted by two residents, Lydia Vila and Maricel Pedrosa. Those two ladies together are dynamic duo, and they're really helping shape their neighborhood on West Clayton. So I just want to give kudos to them, and it makes me understand, too, how block parties can actually invigorate a part of our community. So it started off with Neighborhood Watch. The Neighborhood Watch developed into a block party committee. So if anybody's looking to try to revitalize their community, their neighborhood, this is an outlet to do it in. So that, that happened this past weekend. And then also, I was recently able to do two write-alongs with our Waukegan Police Department. So I want to say thank you to Officer Dave Mahoney, who twisted my arm a little bit. Write-alongs isn't what I've been wanting to do, but I just put it off and put it off and put it off. And so Officer Mahoney was talking to me a couple of weeks back, and really just kind of like said, you should do this, and I, and I promised him I would, I would do it before the summer ended, so I held true to my word on that. And I got to see kind of how the officers do the procedural work that I had nowhere, I didn't know about. Like, you see them out in public, but when you see them in their workspace, it's a different dynamic. There's paperwork, it's a little less exciting, but it's good to understand how that works and how that process goes along, because to better understand how our officers' jobs actually are. It's not just them being in public and enforcing our laws, but there's a lot of procedural stuff that needs to be done in place, and sometimes we lose sight of that. And also to see some of how our officers engage with community members is super important to me, so there's a great opportunity to see that as well in action. So those are a couple of things I just wanted to bring up, and that is all for now tonight. Thank you so much, everyone.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. I'd just like to welcome our First Ward Alderman, Alderman Bolton, and look forward to working with you. I should say doctor, because I know you earned that, so look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Alderman Tempest.
These girls almost got us outnumbered now. Oh, no, those, those, quadro four. It's a good balance, isn't it? Wonderful balance. I want to talk a little bit about our, our tree problem. You drive around, you see a lot of dead, they're elm trees. This happened years ago over on Gillette Avenue when they, the elm disease hit the community, and every beautiful tower and elm tree was gone within no time at all. But now I notice quite a few elm trees in town, younger ones, that have died, and we need to get a little more effort going and taking those down. And I'd like to see a little more effort with the forestry and taking care of those dead elm trees, because they can become a danger if they stay there long enough and the dead branches and so forth. That's my only concern today.
Alderman May.
Thank you so much. I'd also like to welcome Alderman Bolton. I'm very glad for the gender advantage we're getting up here, so go, go girl power. And I also like to congratulate Ms. Garland and Mr. Hewitt on their appointments this evening. I know Ms. Garland's worked up in the CDBG office for some years, and it's great when we can promote from within, from someone who's been here, working from the ground up, so congratulations. I, I'm good, I have, some people may have noticed, I did not vote for all the appointments, and my comment is not on the person, but it's on the procedure and the process. I think that if we're gonna move our city, and which Mayor Cunningham certainly is, we approved, as Mr. Quinn said earlier, half a million dollars on assessments tonight. Half a million dollars so that we can get our house in order and get our roadmap together and figure out where we're going with this infrastructure. Alder, when Mayor Cunningham was an Alderman, we sat up here and we beat a drum. We need to plan, we need to plan, we need professional planning. So I support these efforts. The assessments that we approved were budgeted for. They were presented to us in the initial budget, the, the money is there, and he made it a priority, and I applaud the mayor for doing so. But I think at the same time, when we're hiring, we need to be putting these jobs out onto the open market and make it a competitive hiring process. We should be, it, it's not about the person, I just think there should have been the competition when we're talking about the most important jobs in our city. I think people should commit. We should have better recruitment, and we should have better advertisement of high-level positions, because we're getting ready to take this city to the next step. We're gonna spend a half a million dollar on assessments. We need, we need to make sure that we are hiring the best and the brightest, and that we're, we have a competitive process for doing so. So I, I welcome everyone, all the new appointments. I wish them the best, and I hope we all can work together very peacefully, and I, like I said, my, my comment is on the process, not on the person. I'll move on to the grant that we approved tonight, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we're going to get from the U.S. EPA from the Great Lakes Lakes Restoration Initiative. Grant money like this is not easy to come by anymore, especially under the new administration. He doesn't, our new president doesn't seem to be very fond of our environment and, and protecting it. So this is a really big achievement for our city, and I'm, I'm very excited that, I'm gonna go back to the, sustain, twenty fifteen, we did a Sustainable Shoreline Plan, and in twenty fifteen, we did the Lakefront Active Implementation Grant. And both of these plans laid out the framework so that we can get grants like this. So the Sustainable Shoreline Grant broke down different projects at the lakefront So the Sustainable Shoreline Grant broke down different projects at the lakefront that we should be obtaining grants for. And sure as heck, we went out for a grant to build the bioswells and to filter the rain water so that we don't have so much pollution going into our lake. So I'm very excited and applaud the council for supporting that wholeheartedly. And that's all I have, so thank you.
Alderman Valco.
I too would like to add my congratulations to Alderman Bolton, and to the two new people that took two positions this evening. Well deserved. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I too would like to welcome Alderman Bolton and our new two department heads. Congratulations. It's such an honor to have another woman on the board, and I guarantee you, your knees will stop shaking in about an hour. I just wanted to reach out to, I, as many of you know, I did not vote for the $150,000 for the library last City Council meeting, and I did explain why. And I just want to tell you that I received a wonderful letter from Mr. Lee. Honestly, it was so touching, could not have been a better class act, and I just want to say how much I appreciate him and what a wonderful job he's done for our library, so thank you. I actually had the honor of having one of our first block parties this year, which is a little unusual. I had a lot more last year. So I want to thank the police department, who comes out and does a phenomenal job. They brought the K-9 unit, they brought the command unit.
Did you read this one?
Consequently, I want to thank the fire department, and I want to apologize to the fire department. The police came with the Jax, the K-9, and the command unit, and all the kids were running through with this shiny new truck. The firefighters got to sit there, because there was no big thrill like the command unit. And in fact, the big fascination, and my firefighters were so good about it, was looking underneath the truck to see why it was quote-unquote peeing. It was leaking oil, and it became the big attraction, and I just want to say, the firefighters handed it so well, they actually spent all their time in the command unit hustling the kids through. And let me tell you, to sit there, they did an excellent job, but like I said, it's hard to compete with a dog in a command unit like that, so I felt very sorry for them. But the residents sincerely thank you, you guys did a great job. That's all, thank you.
Okay. You know, there was one thing I want to add before I leave. On top of being a, named an Edgar Fellow for 2017, I also went to Peoria, Illinois, on behalf of the city, because the City of Waukegan, or myself, was awarded the Community Service Award that was given to me, or to us, by the Illinois Chamber, Illinois Black Chamber of Commerce for the state of Illinois. And the person who presented that award to me was the gentleman who's here tonight, who did the opening prayer, Mr. Arthur Gass. I have the award in my office, and I'm still trying to position it, but I want to publicly only thank you, but thank Mr. Larry Ivors for considering, not only myself, and along with me, I think is the President and CEO of North Shore Gas and Peoples Gas. We both, from this area that I know of, receive an award, so thank you, Mr. Gass, but also thank to the City of Waukegan and myself. With that being said, we have a motion by Alderman Bolton. This is going to be a great motion. And second by Alderman Taylor to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, thank you. See you next council meeting, everybody.